Splinter's shooting your way, huh?
Probably Splinter. I kept clock work on. What's that?
Work on. I'd like to call to order the July tenth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting for the city of East Bethel. If we could all rise and say the pledge of allegiance again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
I gotta, I gotta, I wanna add.
Oh.
For, uh, on eight point zero G two, wanna add the complaint form? That's it.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
All those in favor, as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? Our first item on the agenda is the Nexus conduit bonding proposal. And before we get into it, Jack, I'll read an intro to it, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Cause when I was, uh, before I got into this government stuff, one of the things that drove me crazy was when there was a big issue, there'd be a vote, a council decision, but never an explanation for how they arrived at the decision, it seemed to me, anyway. Maybe I'm overstating it a little bit, but I just wanted to, uh, let the people of this, of the residents of East Bethel know that we, we didn't anguish over it, but we were due, we did our due diligence on the Nexus issue because it is, it is a, a somewhat complicated issue, um, project, however you wanna describe it. And, uh, there are a lot of moving parts. So one of the things was that there was a conditional use permit attached to the property. And those of us who don't have a background in this stuff learned that the conditional use permit is attached to the property. It's not something we had any choice about. That decision was made by a previous city council in twenty eighteen. So we learned about that. And then just at our last meeting, or the meeting before the work meeting, we learned from the county assessor that the county assessor, and apparently he's the final word in the matter, uh, was going to treat this property as exempt from property taxes, which is another big issue. Okay, so those were two major items that we had to work through and get answers to. So we all have a, a certain belief that our, our job is really to do the due diligence. And that's what we did, and we took more time than some people wanted, but that's why we took the time. And I think where we wound up at this point is with a better deal, if you will, for East Bethel and a good deal for Nexus and the use of a property that needs to be used in a way that it was intended to be used. So I think it's kind of a win-win all the way around. And also with as little impact on the school district and potentially through a school levy on the residents of East Bethel as we could accomplish. So that's, that's my two cents, just to give you a summary of... What would you like to say, Mr. Davis?
In your packet, there's a lengthy report on this. A lot of it is, uh, a repeat of things that've been discussed in the past. For brevity, I'm just gonna give a very brief summary and conclude where we left off at the last meeting. The vote on the conduit bond financing for Nexus was tabled at the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three meeting to allow additional details regarding the payment in lieu of taxes program, participation fees, council questions to be submitted for review, and provide time for the newly council appointee to become informed of the details of this matter. Nexus has submitted an exhibit in your packet in attachment six to answer the questions that were submitted and discussed by council. At this time, the city attorney has affirmed that the public hearing for the bond consideration has been met, as this subject was tabled at the June twelfth and twenty-six meetings, with the discussion continued at the July tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Council is requested to consider the options and recommendations as outlined as follows. Recommendation one, if the city council finds it warranted to approve the conduit bond financing, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty as exhibited in attachment one and documents relating thereto as exhibited in attachments two through five. Bond counsel to the city, Dorsey Whitney, LLP, developed these documents on behalf of the city and endorses the approval of the same. Approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty authorized the issuance of the note, the loan of proceeds to Nexus Diversified Community Services for acquisition of the project, execution of all required documentations, and the issuance by Anoka County, Minnesota of additional financing for the project. This approval will result in the lowest overall interest rate for the financing of the project, and in turn, the lowest lease cost to the school district. Recommendation number two, if this is an option, is the city council does not find it warranted to approve the financing, consider approval of resolution that's in the packet twenty twenty-three forty, which dismisses the financing request of Nexus Diversified Community Service and prevents the city from issuing conduit financing for the project, but provides consent for the Nexus Diversified Community Service to seek and secure funding from the project through Anoka County, Minnesota, or one of the other municipalities or authorities. Recommendation number three would be the city council can take no action which present Nexus from obtaining a tax-exempt financing from any public entity. However, this would significantly increase the overall interest rate for the financing of the project. Nexus could then seek a commercial loan to acquire the project facility, but at a higher cost than with the use of the tax-exempt bonds. The higher costs of this option are more than likely to be passed along in part to the school district and result in the most negative impact to the school district. So we have three options to choose from, so those are our choices. Is there any other information you'd like for me to present on this matter?
No, thanks. Thank you, Jack.
Make a, uh, motion to approve recommendation number one, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty as exhibited in attachment one and documents relating thereto as exhibited in attachments two through five.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got, uh, page ninety-seven. I'm just curious unless this is after the fact. But, uh, page ninety-seven is, I had asked a question for the PRTF contract between the state of Minnesota and Nexus Company. And I was looking at the document that we were sent, and I don't know a lot about all documents, but I have dealt with them in the past. I guess it'd be a question for the city attorney. Shouldn't it say P, uh, PRTF somewhere in the body of this as well? All I have is just on the very top, talking about the PRTF.
I'm here and a council member. Let me take a look at that. As I indicated before, I, um, there's a large number of documents, and I wanted to be, you know, very focused and also good use of, of my time, but also, uh, by extension, make sure that I'm billing for my time on those things that truly are, are appropriate and so forth. I have to not, I have to admit, when it came to the actual licensing issued by the Department of Human Services, I made the judgment, well, that's between them and obviously the person, the licensee, and whatever that format is and however they put it together. Um, again, that's not something where I didn't see a good use of the time. I will take a look at it right now.
Okay, well, yeah, I got a question too. Something like this, wouldn't this be, have to be notarized?
Uh, licenses generally not. Usually what you're doing with a notary is, um, is when you're having to like record something with the county recorder's office, or if there's a statutory requirement that requires notary. Otherwise, rarely do you see a notary.
Okay. Then I, cause the reason I'm bringing up some of this stuff too is, I looked at the page ninety-seven, and if you look at the document part of it, at the bottom, it says twenty-four. Well, if you look at the page number below that, it says twenty-three. Well, the page right before that says twenty-two. The page after that says twenty-four. So I'm, I'm like, did somebody make a copy and I missed something, or twenty-three is gone?
It, it appears we have someone in the audience that might be able to answer that question.
Margaret, would you mind stepping?
That's good. I just wanna get my point out there.
But excellent attention to detail.
Well, I was surprised. I just...
Yeah, so the question was...
If you could state your name for the record and who you are.
Margaret M. from Nexus Family Healing. Um, so the question was, could we see the documentation that we were awarded the PRTF beds? And so I was looking for what would do that without adding a lot of extra pages that wouldn't inform to the question. And so right before that is the letter that we got that said we were awarded the beds with an intent to contract with us. So that, well, you're gonna wanna see that they did, that the Department of Human Services did actually contract with us. The reason why there's the page twenty-four on that signature page is that the whole contract was twenty-four pages. I didn't include the whole contract. I just showed the last page to show that it was signed on both sides. The other page underneath it was my pageation from the briefing that we had submitted to the council. So that is why those pages look odd.
Thanks for clarifying that. It was just kinda weird. Number one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret.
I'm good.
Y'all squared away?
Yep.
Okay, calling the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve this resolution, I don't have the number right in front of me, twenty, twenty twenty-three dash forty, right? Uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? Thank you, and I, I wanna say that those folks right here in the audience did a lot of due diligence too. I know how much you guys worked on it, so, thanks for being patient with us, patient with us.
I'm glad that we could get this passed for you and for East Bethel. Just wanna say welcome to East Bethel and, uh, the very best of luck to you, and if the city can assist in any other ways in your endeavors, please let us know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all for your hard work. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. I guess item four B is continuance of public hearing on the amendment to the city code, chapter two, section four twenty-four.
Thank you, Kevin. At the June fifth work meeting, it was discussed if there was to be but one full-time person responsible for the land use planning and business development for the city, the community development director position is more appropriate for addressing the issues of a developing city than the city planner. Uh, at the meeting on June twenty-six, the public hearing was open, but it was continued until this meeting. And at this time, staff is requesting that council continue the public hearing to discuss revisions to the ordinance as exhibited in attachment one, and consider approving these changes to city ordinance, chapter two, article six, division six, community development, with the approval of the ordinance amendment twenty twenty-three dash thirteen as exhibited in your packet.
You wanna open the public hearing? Open the public hearing. Okay, so this is not the public forum. This is a public hearing on the ordinance change. Anybody have anything? No? Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve city ordinance, section two dash four twenty-four.
Second.
Um, Jack, I have one question on it, uh, where we have in our, uh, section two four twenty-four where we have the red line copy and it's removing, uh, the language for the city planner. Um, will we still have language that will align the duties of the city planner?
We, we will, but then those duties can be expressed outside the ordinance. It's just an organizational or it's a procedural matter if city council approves the hire of that position in the future.
Yep, I, I just wanna make sure that...
I guess I'd like to see the red taken out in the original contract as it is for the mayor to sign when it comes time to do that.
It's in, it's in your packet, Bob. It should be attached.
There's a tin copy right after the red line copy. Yep.
Okay.
I got a thing to say. I was looking at this ordinance and I kept reading it over and over, and I'm like, one thing that I'd like to add to it is any decision made, say if we approve the community development guy, that I think should be brought to city council before any decisions are made, big decisions. Because there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that we're not aware of, and I've heard it, I don't look at the social media stuff like I hear it, but there appears to be a lot of information out there that I'm not aware of. And I'm wondering how the heck they're getting it when we don't even know. You know what I mean? So it's like, I'd like to have added to this ordinance, the city council has to approve stuff to move forward on different things.
Well, they do. Everything is brought to the city council.
Right, but it's not in the ordinance.
But it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, is what I'm saying. Everything has to be approved by city council. We cannot do anything without your approval.
Okay, the thing is then with it is, you as the city administrator, then I would like you to at least send us an email and stuff like that.
Absolutely.
Whatever comes up, so we are aware of what's going on, and then we can talk to you directly or however it works.
Absolutely.
Cause I don't wanna hear stuff on social media that we don't even know nothing about. And it's like, really?
I, I can assure you, most, if not everything you read on social media is not accurate.
No, no, I understand that, but...
Come on, Jack. Yeah, it is.
You really believe that?
But there is some stuff on there that, you know, that things are getting done, and it's like, what are they talking about? I didn't hear about it. And it has came true, so just, you know, just to prevent it. So that's all I got.
Okay, and this is all worded properly. This is an ordinance, not a resolution.
That's correct.
Okay, just, just making sure. Does anybody wanna, uh, put forward a motion to adopt this ordinance change?
Uh, I already did.
We already did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we were discussing.
I must've spaced out. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Well, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard?
Did we close the public hearing?
Yep. I do remember doing that, yeah. Okay, we're off to the consent agenda.
Uh, I believe now...
No, public forum.
Oh, excuse me.
Wait, I did it again. I did it last time.
Takes a team.
Takes a team. Takes a village in my case. Okay. All right, public forum. And Ms. Leschinsky coming up to fill us in on Booster Days, right?
Well, you could look at it.
You could look at it though, okay.
I just wanna address what happened at the six twenty-six meeting. I've read through the notes, and you guys are talking about sarcasm and snide comments and decorum and bad behavior. Go back and look how you treated Stephanie Dorn at six twenty-six, when you were talking about being the person, the liaison for the Booster Day committee. You were laughing and giggling and trying to pass it off to somebody else. Nobody thought it was worth their time. I would admit, I would like you to go forward with a good attitude about Booster Day, cause that is the city's representation. It is a city event. So, Mr. Miller, I hope when you are the liaison, which I think you were chosen, that you go with an open mind and help them, because Stephanie's had a really hard time getting volunteers. She is unpaid, by the way, representing our city to Anoka County and the state of Minnesota. So, we would like to grow it again. It was before, pre-COVID times, which was decades ago, a good event. But when you guys are laughing and giggling and saying you don't wanna do it, she was humiliated. So I think you owe her an apology also.
I honestly don't know what you're talking about.
I would say go back and look.
I know we kidded, we kidded about Jim and the Sand Hill Crane Committee, which hadn't met for seven years, and that he wanted to be on that. I don't remember doing anything about Booster.
Well, go back and look at the meeting.
Yeah.
She was very upset, and I don't blame her.
Is there any reason Stephanie didn't come here and speak to us?
Well, she's not gonna come here and talk about it. I mean, why should she continue to, she's probably thinking about quitting. Just to shrug, that's all you have to say?
What do you want me to say?
I'm just saying, we need to go forward, but...
I don't even remember the cause of the offense that you're talking about.
Giggling and laughing, and she has a hard time already getting volunteers, and you guys made it sound like it wasn't a big deal.
And as I just told you, what I remembered was kidding Jim about the Sand Hill Crane thing.
Well, I'm just suggesting that if we're gonna go forward here in a positive manner, which you are expecting from your commission members.
Well, don't just expect us to take any accusation just cause you say it.
I'm not quite sure who you're addressing on this, because I, I don't recall saying anything. And you're now saying you guys are speaking on this.
I, I'm talking about the council in general. We need to move forward in a positive manner. Booster Day is a committee.
Well, we're trying to. Yeah, we are trying to.
But you keep referencing in the notes that I'm reading sarcasm, snide comments, decorum.
I don't know what you're talking about. I literally don't. Maybe I'm having a brain fog or something, but I don't remember.
I'm looking at May first, May eighth, May twenty-second. There's all references to decorum.
Is there any way you could pull that out and send it to Jack so we can look at it?
Yeah, we'd like to know what you're talking about, cause I don't have any problem apologizing if I mess up, but I just wanna know if I did.
I'm just saying, she's an unpaid volunteer. All of them are unpaid volunteers who are trying very hard to represent the city of East Bethel in a positive light. And when somebody says, well, I don't really, you know, laughs and giggles about being the liaison, that's not a positive promotion of our city.
You're not listening.
I am listening.
We literally don't understand what you're referring to. That's what I'm getting.
Go back and watch the video.
Oh, I intend to, yeah.
But I feel bad for her. It's been a rough few years, just based on things that have happened. And we've had to, you know, she's had to reduce things down to, you know, very few events. So we just need to help her promote it as a positive city event. I'm asking Chris, or Tim Miller, to please keep an open mind and help her promote it as a positive event so that we can grow it back to where it was.
Has anybody thought instead of Booster Days, call it East Bethel Days? Because maybe in some people's minds, Booster Days means you're supporting a booster club.
It was a fundraising event for all the city, five oh one C threes and five oh one C fours to begin with.
Because...
Cause it is East Bethel Booster Days to fundraise for all of these city...
Organizations.
Yeah.
Right, and you understand that because you've been behind it, but somebody knew...
Well, you've been part of it too, Bob, so maybe you should've been the liaison to help her.
Well, after that meeting, she came up here and I talked with her, and I was happy with what she was saying. And I said, if there's anything I can do, let me know. And when she walked away, she was happy. And I turned to Jim Smith right here and I said, that's a type of enthusiasm I wish we had all over the city. So I don't know where, where this is actually coming from, because I'm looking forward to working with her.
Well, I hope so.
Since this is new, and I've had an open mind since I've started, and even when I talked to, you know, the committees in the beginning, so I will definitely reach out to her right away and, and figure out what it was, because when she left, she was smiling and happy.
Well, she's, she's promoting a good event, so I hope that everybody has a positive attitude about it. We really need to get it built up again, because there's very few organizations that will promote or help her with this. We can't get volunteers.
Well, I was planning on, and I'm still planning to make a point of mentioning it, that it's this Saturday, June, or July fifteenth, right up here at the city hall, parks right across at Booster Park and all that.
Booster Park East.
And, uh, yeah, I still plan to do that at the end of the meeting.
I'm just saying...
I see it's on Facebook, on some of the East Bethel sites.
Right.
And I've seen the little signs around. Some of them seem to have disappeared.
Well, people take them for their garage sales and...
But you realize something. We're human beings, and the last time we had a regular public hearing, both Bob and I were attacked by somebody in a way that we thought was completely unfounded, especially me. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty hard to tick off, but completely unfounded. And, uh, my attorney is very happy that he happened to put the slander on a public recording. So that should be coming real handy sometime. But, uh, don't just expect us to embrace accusations of poor behavior on our part if we don't know what you're talking about.
I'm just saying, if you go back into...
They just understand, you know.
Right, I understand that, but...
We're not gonna say, oh, I'm sorry, well, if we don't even know what you're talking about.
But the commission members feel like they're under attack too, because some of us are actually doing what we need to do, but we're seeing that, hearing that we're gonna be replaced.
I don't recall any of that even coming up in quite a while.
I'm just saying, this is what's happening out in the city when you're hearing.
But, but that's not, not us.
Somebody's stirring the pot here and...
Yeah, I think somebody's stirring the pot. That's a good way to say it.
But I'm just saying, if we could promote this, it would be fabulous. It's a good event for East Bethel.
And one thing that's good is for us to treat each other as positively as possible. We agree.
Right. I'm just saying, if we're gonna see...
And we thought we were, and, uh, if we misstepped, I will look at the, at the video and see if we were out of line. If we are, we'll apologize for it.
Well, I think we're beating a dead horse here.
Right.
While we're on this three minutes.
Right. Well, positive engagement is how we fix things, right?
Well...
Well, she's the only person on the list, so...
Just keep beating the same horse over and over and over. We, we haven't seen anything. If you wanna pull those minutes or recordings out and bring them and show me where, what individual did what, because you're just kinda throwing a blanket out there and saying, well, y'all did this. Well, no, we all didn't do this.
Well, I'm just saying, June twenty-sixth, it was kinda disappointing to watch how everybody was treating the whole situation, so...
Well, I don't know what I did. I'll apologize. I don't know what I did. I really don't.
What was your first day?
Well, I'm not gonna apologize, cause I don't remember doing anything to apologize for.
Well, all right, well...
If I, if I look at the film and I see, oh, I was out of line, I will apologize.
Okay, that's cool. That's what I'm saying. If we're gonna expect everybody else to be, you know, on the level, we should expect everybody to treat everybody the same.
Yeah, and that goes for us too.
Right, and I've never said anything bad against you guys, so... All right, cool. That's all I had. Booster Day, July fifteenth.
Oh, that, okay. No, okay. I wonder if you're gonna talk about Booster Days.
Well, I was talking about Booster, but all right, thank you.
Denise, Denise, do you know if Stephanie is still looking for any volunteers?
She is looking for volunteers. There are very few. Um, to be honest, some of our main volunteers have passed away, so, you know, we have fewer of our steadfast fans, but, um, she needs people to help with parade, watching, um, the blow, you know, the inflatables. Um, we wanna make sure that everybody's safe when they're outmoting the park.
Is there an age restriction on volunteers?
Uh, no, because we used, we have used scouts and girl scouts and, um, church groups in the past.
Well, that's a good idea. Why don't you reach out to the girl scouts and boy scouts?
They probably are, they're working.
For their civic badge or whatever it is.
I'm sure that they have. They generally have in the past, and the boy scouts have stepped up to the bat on that. I do know that. But, uh, so this would be a, a call to any East Bethel residents or organizations, some help could really be used this weekend.
And they have a meeting on Wednesday, this Wednes- And they have a meeting on Wednesday, this Wednesday regarding Saturday's events.
Is that at City Hall or in the Senior Center?
Um, here, right?
Yeah, in City Hall.
In City Hall.
So, that's at City Hall at what time?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. So, if anybody would be able to lend a helping hand, get involved with something, uh, a couple hours of volunteerism and help your community out, it would really be appreciated.
Yeah, they usually need help with the parade too, so.
So, if you could, anybody would be interested, please, please reach out, come to the meeting. If you need more details, you can probably give Jack a call at City Hall and he can get you the right information and whatever. But, uh, it'd be great if everybody would step up a little bit and, when everybody steps up lifting something heavy, become, becomes small.
All right, thank you for hearing me out.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that will close.
What?
Well, Ruth, you're not on the list. I'm just, I'm just kidding.
I know. I'm not even sure if I'm supposed to say this at this time. But anyway, I just wanted to say, um, with the conditional use permit, I'm glad that changes were made. I had talked to Jack and our attorney after our last meeting and said I wondered if it was legal because some of the things weren't like the old one. So, anyway, I'm glad to see the changes that happened for that. And then I wanted to thank you, Council, for taking your time and going through things to get everything situated. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your input in the process. With that, I guess we'll close the public forum part of our meeting. And we're on to the consent agenda. Finally got it right.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Like to pull D.
D isn't dog?
Yes.
Tim, anything?
Nope.
Bob, anything? Brian, anything? I want to pull A. And D as well.
E.
D, like in dog. Okay, just two quick questions. If you don't mind, Jim, I'll go first on A.
We have to approve.
Yeah.
We have to vote.
Approve the rest of the.
Yeah, we have to vote on consent agenda.
All right, so you got a motion made and seconded, so everything but A and D. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Okay, just two quick things on item A. On the, the approval of bills, that is. EDA ninety-one hundred dollars for Civic Plus.
That's the fee that we pay them for the hosting and support of our website on an annual basis.
And are they the, are they the same people as published the East Bethel bulletin now too?
Uh.
Carrie said something along that.
I'd have to check with Carrie on that. I'm not aware of it. I think that's correct that they have some interest in that, but I'd have to get back to you to verify that.
She said something about they had merged with the company, didn't, and, uh, we talked about that earlier, so. All right, um, the second thing was Park and Landscape Services, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars for Zars of Tar.
That's the paving for the trail within John Anderson Park, within that sixteen acres of the city.
The one that goes through the backyard of that?
No, it does not go through the backyard. It's within the park itself.
Oh, okay.
And that extension from the park itself over to two thirty-seventh is yet to be determined.
That's not part of this.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be determined next year if I remember the meeting.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to approve item A then. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Jim, D.
Okay, D, that's, uh, to approve hire for the Community Development Director. We've been going back and forth on this thing a lot. And, uh, this is just my opinion of it. It's like, if I understand, well, first of all, I guess, Jack, the city planner, now I got to get this straight, is that union?
No.
Okay, so if the Community Development Director, salary paid, is that union?
No.
Okay. So, my thought is with this position to hire, if I understand it right, for Aaron, he started in, uh, June of two thousand twenty-two. And I don't know if this is correct or not, seventeen dollars an hour, the way I understand it. And, uh, I remember, I think it was a December meeting when Kevin was sworn in through the council. And they agreed to give him another thousand a month to help out with that interim part, right? That's all that was?
That's correct. That was just for.
But no, before that, then he was city planner then?
That's correct. I believe in July when Aaron McDermott left and he was given the city planner role.
Okay.
And then in, on December the twenty-eighth, he was appointed, in addition to the city planner, he was given the interim Community Development Director position. Paid an additional thousand dollars to compensate him for some of the extra.
Right, some of the stuff, okay. Because the way I, the numbers that I got wrote here, say at the, when he was first hired, for the year would have been thirty-two thousand, six forty. Then he was given the twelve, extra twelve thousand, which would have brought it to forty-four thousand, six forty. And then he was the city planner, correct, that went in? And that was a total of eighty-nine thousand, correct, for doing that job?
No, I think the city planner position was sixty-three and then he was given an extra thousand dollars a month to do the extra, some of the extra duties on top of that. The city planner position at eighty-nine is the bottom of that pay scale.
Okay, the city planner.
I mean, the Community Development Director.
Oh, okay, so that, okay, for that one.
Councilmember Smith, I started as an intern.
Yeah.
A temporary three-month internship at seventeen dollars an hour.
Okay, see, that's what I'm trying to figure out because like, within a year's time, you got a great raise.
You know what?
That's what I mean. That's what I'm looking at.
I also left a great job to come work for the city.
Oh, did you? Okay, I didn't know that. But the point is, is that in a year's time, your wage went up a lot.
So did his responsibilities tremendously, Jim.
I understand that, but I don't know anybody else in history that have had a raise that quick. Even if his job went up to something else.
Look, look, look at it this way. He was highly underpaid when he started here.
Oh, why'd you hire him then?
Because he was willing to take the job.
You got him cheap.
But no, no, it's, the, the, the thing with going out, if you don't hire Aaron, it's going to be very difficult to find somebody to fill this position.
I understand that.
And the reason is because our pay rate is not equivalent to our, most of our surrounding cities. We lost a Community Development Director previously because they could go make more money elsewhere.
True.
Aaron meets all the qualifications. He's done an excellent job and I highly recommend his hire. He's been a great help and I think he's going to be a great value to the city.
Okay.
And the, uh, city administrator for Sandy just got a thirty thousand dollar a year raise.
Sandy?
Yeah.
That's not us, so it doesn't matter.
It's not us, but you asked a question.
It doesn't matter to me.
Excuse me, I called item D too, so let me, the reason I called it was because my sense is that you're going to be approved and I didn't want it to be an, an item in a consent agenda. It's more important than that. And I thought it deserved a proper individual attention than just to be passed as part of a
Thank you.
consent agenda. And there are issues. For me, your being on the City Council of Cambridge is an issue for me. And it's not, you know, espionage or something like that. It's the time commitment that it takes to be a city council member and a Community Development Director. And, uh, I know you're, and Jack's told us, you're excellent organizing your time, but it's an issue for me. But I'm willing to go out on a limb because I think you have done good work and I've observed how you've dealt with, and honestly, with some pressure from us, which is good. As you know, from experience, I mean, you're not a little kid. You're a young man compared to me, but you're not a kid. You see things about people when they're under pressure that you won't see any other way. And so, a little bit of pressure is okay and I kind of see how people respond to it. But honestly, I've been impressed with your performance so far. And I think you're someone worth giving the benefit of the doubt to, is how I put it. And, uh, you have anything more?
No.
I'm not going to repeat everything that was said. I mean, same thing. I had Jack, I had no, absolutely no idea. And when I said that I needed more information before I made a decision, that's exactly what I needed. I've got a resume, I got your letter, anything I could find that the city had on you. Because otherwise, for me to make a vote, it's based on because they did it or because I thought the materials were there or hearsay. So, one, one thing people know from when I was on the council last time, I ask a lot of questions. Sometimes I know the answer, sometimes I don't. But I usually research things to make sure that my decisions are what I think are fair. Hopefully, they're correct. If not, well, you know what? We all learn. But, yeah, I, I got no beef.
Anyone who, uh.
This is an at-will hire, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's it.
Don't, don't let the question shake you. It's like, what do you mean?
Just a question.
Okay, well, do you want to make a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve item D. The hiring of the Community Development Director.
And I'll elaborate and say the hiring of Mr. Aaron Berg to be the Community Development Director for East Bethel. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Congratulations, Aaron.
You're welcome. Thanks for your kind words.
You're welcome. You've earned it. Okay, new business. Folks from Designing Earth are here.
You guys will give me one second. I'll get things loaded up here and we will.
Okay.
All right, thanks for your patience. Uh, Designing Earth Contracting Incorporated, an East Bethel company for sixteen years, has outgrown its current location. And on June ninth of two thousand twenty-three, its owner, JSN Ulysses Holdings LLC, purchased two adjacent parcels of land at the new address of twelve eighty-two hundred and eighty-seventh Lane Northeast in the Soder Commercial Park. A concept plan proposal was reviewed by city staff and presented at the May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. The proposal consisted of the construction of a new nineteen thousand square foot building or facility for constru-, a construction, trade, and service business facility. This property is zoned industrial or light industrial. Uh, this use fits within our two thousand forty comprehensive plan. The conditional use permit is, uh, a requirement as a result of, um, the zoning. Construction, sales, and/or service is a conditional use defined in the zoning code. Therefore, this, uh, in front of you tonight is the, um, approval and the public hearing for the conditional use permit. Uh, the Planning Commission did review, uh, and, and held a public hearing at its own meeting on June twenty-seventh. And at the conclusion of its review, made a recommendation by a six-oh vote for approval, uh, for the city council to consider. Staff recommends city council review and the CUP request and along with the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the CUP with conditions set forth in resolution two thousand twenty-three dash forty-seven.
Is that right down by the theater?
Yes, directly behind the theater.
Yep. All right.
To the west. Um, just another note before we continue, if there are any other questions, exterior storage is also a conditional use in our business district. So, within the resolution, item number two, um, lists the exterior storage conditions. And these now, uh, match the revised ordinance, uh, that you guys
Oh, good.
uh, passed on June twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Um, these conditions were written based on the new, newly proposed ordinance change. Um, it went into effect ten days after your passage, which means that it's live and active and ready to be, uh, working today. Um, we will require that the owner sign a separate conditional use permit agreement identifying what those conditions are. Uh, so sometime down the road, uh, when someone's in a different position is looking for a conditional use permit with some language, they might be able to find something that identifies what the conditional use terms were. So, we don't have to hunt for something again.
Gee, what are you thinking of?
Just trying to make it easier for the future. That's all.
Can I get a motion?
Um, well, we held a public hearing at the Planning Commission level, so we don't have to hold two of them. We will have to hold a public hearing for the, a couple items down in connection with this.
Yeah, but this particular, the first is.
Has already had a public hearing.
Should we see if somebody wants to speak at this one?
You can if you want to. It wasn't advertised, but.
Well, wait a minute. Pardon me. We have a resolution, two thousand twenty-three dash forty-seven. How do you want to treat it? I mean, we're not having a public hearing about it, right?
Corrected. The public hearing has already been held.
So, uh, so are we going to approve it or what are we going to do?
That would be up to you guys if you want to.
That's why I said going to get a motion.
Oh, yeah, staff recommendations.
That's what I meant. Sorry, I'm not, I'm being obtuse, so.
Yeah, my, my recommendation would be after reviewing the conditions uh, and the Planning Commission's recommendation, approve the conditional use permit uh, with the conditions set forth to allow Designing Earth to remain in our community.
Yeah.
Uh, that being said, I move resolution number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three dash forty-seven for, uh, let me get it correct here. Designing Earth Contracting, Inc.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, none heard.
All right, moving on to the next item would be the site plan review as by city code. I'm not going to give you the background information again on Designing Earth unless you want to hear me repeat myself. Um, however, the code requirements are that, uh, any new commercial building have a site plan review. Uh, city staff have reviewed the proposed architecture and determined that it's consistent with the standards of the city code. There is a landscape plan which exceeds the minimum landscape requirements for the city of East Bethel. The parking plan includes forty-five total spaces divided up between nineteen paved for customers at the front office with two handicap stalls and twenty-four yard stalls for employees. This combination of parking spaces meets all zoning and, uh, city code requirements for off-street parking. There is an easement, uh, between the two lots that they intend on combining, which will need to be vacated prior to the lot combination happening. That will be the next item on your agenda. Uh, the Planning Commission, uh, at its June twenty-seventh meeting, conducted a site plan review and at its conclusion by a six-oh vote recommends approval to the city council. Staff recommends that city council review the site plan as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the site plan review with the conditions set forth in two thousand twenty-three dash forty-eight and its accompanying exhibits.
Just to clarify why I said what I said before and why I'm about to repeat it right now is we've had this information for three days. So, we have reviewed the site plan.
Okay.
So, with that, uh, anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash forty-eight, Designing Earth Construction Site Plan Review.
Second.
Okay, we got seconds? Do we have discussion?
Uh, Aaron, as they purchased three lots and are building on two, I assume all three lots have a separate PIN number?
Uh, we will combine the two lots where the facility is going to be built. The third lot is actually divided by a drainage ditch.
Okay.
Uh, we're still working to.
And you need the vacancy.
That will be maybe a separate.
Well, that was going to be my question if they have to combine the PIN numbers.
They're technically, uh, councilman Mondo, they've already been combined. I'm far ahead of where we're at today. Yeah, the county's, the county's ready to move to Virgil.
Yeah, just as it was presented on the plat map, it still shows the, so.
So, are you satisfied, Brian?
Yeah, with that answer, yeah.
Okay.
Did, did, maybe I missed here. Did you say something about vacating a lot?
There's a ten-foot wide drainage or utility easement on each lot between the two lots. They're going to combine two lots together, so we can't have their, we can't have. They're going to combine two lots together, so we can't have their, we can't have a drainage or utility easement running through the middle of their shop floor. They decided to put the building on there, so...
But they own it.
They will own the property, yes.
Yeah, the next thing we're going to do is have a public hearing on vacation, vacating the easement.
Their grading plan will need to be finalized by our city engineer to determine water flow and drainage and all those things. So, that will take into effect the vacation of that twenty-foot wide easement.
Is the Corps of Engineers going to play a part? Because I know that that was an issue with the Viking Preserve.
Both watersheds have reviewed and have some comments or permit-related things that need to be accomplished, as well as the county. And that's all being managed under the city engineers' review.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard.
And the last item on this one is the public hearing, this will be a public hearing, for the vacation of a drainage and utility easement at Soder's Commercial Park. The requested action is that you hold a public hearing and consider approval to vacate the drainage and utility easement between lot, between Lot eleven, Block one, Soder's Commercial Park, and Lot ten, Block one, Soder's Commercial Park. Now, those addresses are assigned twelve eighty-two hundred and eighty-seventh Lane Northeast. Staff received an application from Designing Earth requesting the vacation of the drainage and utility easement located between their two lots that they have purchased for future construction of their headquarters. The final plat for Soder's Commercial Park filed on July twenty-seventh of nineteen ninety dedicated a standard ten-foot wide drainage and utility easement along adjoining lot lines for each lot throughout the entire commercial park. City staff have reviewed the request and find it appropriate for the applicant to adjoin those two parcels of property by removing the dedicated easement for future construction. During the site plan review, the city engineer and the public works director were supportive of the easement vacation. Staff is requesting city council hold a public hearing and consider approval of vacation of the drainage and utility easement between the two lots, which is consistent with resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash fifty-three.
Okay, well, that will open the public hearing regarding twelve eighty-two hundred and eighty-seventh Lane Northeast vacation of drainage and utility easement, Soder's Commercial Park. Does anybody wish to speak in the matter? Well, that will close the public hearing, okay? And we have a resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash fifty-three. So, now you need a motion? Yep. By the way, whatever happened to forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one? I'm just curious. I actually put that in my notes. What happened to those?
When there are two of us pulling for items, we just take the next one in sequence. If they happen to take forty-nine and fifty, then I get the next one, the next one down.
I figured it was something as simple as that. Anybody want to make a motion regarding this resolution?
Make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash fifty-three, resolution granting the vacation of drainage and utility easement at twelve eighty-two hundred and eighty-seventh Lane.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to take this time to thank Design Earth for wanting to stay in East Bethel, to continually make it your home and to make a vast and sizable improvement to East Bethel. I really appreciate the wanting to be here, wanting to improve the city and staying here rather than moving out. So, really appreciate it. So, thank you. I'd usually say, welcome to East Bethel to new business, but say thank you for staying.
Well said. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Thanks for expressing that on behalf of all of us. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Do you want to bring up the complaint form? Is that our next item?
I am seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Oh, yeah, meets and bounds, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Steve Span Stranland, trustee, submitted an application for a meets and bounds split of a thirty-nine acre parcel of land located at two eight three six two twenty-first Avenue of Northeast into two separate parcels. The first parcel is the original family farmstead, will be divided off into a five-point-six-six acre lot, and the remaining thirty-four-point-one-six acres will be subdivided at a later date as a future subdivision. The property is proposed for the division and is zoned rural residential per city code. The minimum lot size for any division is two acres. In order to be eligible for a meets and bounds division as outlined in city code, the following conditions must be met. The parcel must be a minimum of five acres. The parcel must have a minimum of three hundred feet of road frontage. The parcel must contain twenty-three thousand square feet of buildable area. The appropriate road, public utility, and drainage easements as outlined by city ordinance must be dedicated to the city. And park and trail dedication fees as adopted by the city council by resolution must be paid at the time of certification of a parcel division. This request for a meets and bounds parcel split meets the conditions as it is more than five acres. It has over three hundred feet of road frontage. It has an existing residence, so it's not a future build site. And it is in compliance with the other two items, four and five. The Planning Commission reviewed this request on June twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. At the conclusion of its review, the requirements of, the review of the requirements of city code, they made a recommendation by a six-oh vote of approval to the city council. City council is requested to review the petition for a meets and bounds split and ensure that it satisfies requirements of city code in addition to the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the parcel split as appears in resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash fifty-two.
Make a motion approving resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash fifty-two, approving meets and bounds split for address twenty-eight thirty-six two twenty-first Avenue of Northeast, East Bethel.
Thanks, Brian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard.
Thank you.
Good job, Aaron. Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. Item eight G one, Lions Club Recycling Service Payments. Cedar East Bethel Lions have provided personnel to operate the city recycle center for over twenty years. In exchange for their service, the city paid the Lions Club one thousand dollars per month for their assistance through two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and fourteen, their payment was increased to twelve hundred dollars per month. There's been no change in their payment since that time. Cedar East Bethel Lions President Dallas Jumberg has requested that city council consider an increase in their payment to fourteen hundred dollars per month due to the increase in volume of recycled materials the center has experienced over the past six years. This payment increase is proposed to be thirteen hundred dollars a month in twenty-four and a reconsideration of upping it to fourteen hundred dollars per month in two thousand and twenty-five. The Lions spend approximately twenty hours per week to conduct these activities. The city's cost to staff and operate the facility for the same number of hours would be the cost of approximately eight hundred dollars per week, or approximately thirty-five hundred dollars a month to perform these same functions. The city will receive a SCORE grant in the amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars for two thousand and twenty-four from Anoka County to operate the recycle program. Included in this amount is the cost of sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars for staffing. This would cover the Lions' request and administrative costs of the city. No city funds will be used with the proposed fee increase to the Lions' club reimbursement. Should this increase be approved, it would only be through two thousand and twenty-four and for the thirteen hundred dollar amount. Continuation of this rate adjustment to the two thousand and twenty-five payment will be dependent on future funding from SCORE beyond the grant in two thousand and twenty-four. Staff requests city council consider approving the fee increase from twelve hundred to thirteen hundred dollars per month to the Lions' club for the operation of the recycle center effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, and continuing through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
I move we make the increase from twelve to thirteen hundred. Dallas is still working that recycle?
He's a volunteer.
Is he really?
Yes.
He's been how long, how many years now?
Dallas has been retired here now for four years, but he's been doing numerous volunteer activities. He's probably busier now than he was when he was full-time employed.
Have we had any more issues with a petroleum dump?
No, not since we made those changes and got that tank in there. There've been very few issues with that.
Can we get a second before we have any more conversation?
Second.
There we go. Thank you.
I thought he did. Hearing things.
So, would it be taken as the two thousand and twenty-four would be separate from the two thousand and twenty-five increase?
That's correct. We would reconsider that again depending on what funds were in the budget and how much grant monies we had.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? None heard.
Item eight G two was added to the agenda. It was the complaint form. We'd had a discussion in our last meeting about code enforcement and the need to document some of these complaints to make sure that they were residents and valid. Mr. Smith came up with some good ideas and suggested some things that needed to be on a form. These are in front of you now, were emailed to you this afternoon. We're requesting that the city council adopt this complaint form as a means of validating and documenting code enforcement complaints and request your consideration of approval of the form.
Do we need a motion and a vote and all that to do it?
You can. You don't have to. It's really an administrative function.
Or just a sense of the council or something?
I move to amend the complaint form.
To adopt the complaint form?
Well, we already have a form. We just were amending it.
We did have a form, huh? I didn't even know we had a form. The new beefed-up complaint form?
Right. Super duty.
So, we have a motion. Do we need, we need a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
I just got one thing before that.
Hey, buddy, you had your chance.
Because Jack was saying, section of city code violation. This is not, this is not just a complaint form just for the code violation. Is that the understanding everybody has? Because that's what I meant it to be. This, the code violation part of it is just a number if that's an issue. But this can be also just a regular complaint.
Yeah, we can use it for anything.
All right, that's fine. Cool.
Thanks for the clarification. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard.
Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so be it. I move to adjourn.
Staff updates and council updates. Staff, staff updates and council updates.
All right.
I have nothing further to report from the staff.
All right. Anybody got?
I don't have nothing.
Council updates?
Nope.
Only thing I'd bring up, of course, is the big elephant in the room of Booster Days this weekend. If anybody wants to join in on that discussion, take this time to really send a huge thanks out to Stephanie Dorn for spending so much time on this, getting volunteers, all the paperwork, all the phone calls. There is an incredible amount of work that needs to be done. I know Ms. Lashinsky knows what it's like as she formerly held that position in the city in the past years. Thank you, Denise, for doing that. So, really big thanks for that. And I'll kind of address a little bit of a point that Denise brought up, that this position is unpaid by the city. And while there is a relation, my understanding is there are relations to the city. It's not actually a city, call it committee, much like the planning, parks, any of the other commissions. And so, I don't know if there could be a payment done, but I, I think some sort of appreciation token at least should be given by the city to the director of the Booster Day Committee and possibly in the form of, say, a hundred dollars in gift cards to a local restaurant or something, at the very least.
Is there a particular, I don't know the genesis of it, so is there a particular reason it's handled the way it is? We don't know about?
Booster Day officially is, officially is separate from the city itself. It's not within, it's not, doesn't fall under the city umbrella.
What's unusual is that we pay for the fireworks.
Well, that's just a contribution, just a contribution from the city.
That's where it's confusing for me.
Yeah, it's just a contribution from the city to help pay for that as a lot of the other businesses make donations. The city makes a donation to that.
Well, there's a lot more than is a donation. I think the city does quite a bit to help this along. Do all the garbage cleanup, do the help setup. Yeah, keep the trash cans clean. They do, they do more than just donate to the fireworks. I mean, our, our city staff works their butt off.
Yeah, they, they do, but to the point where it's not, that, that is my understanding of it. Why I being correct in that, Jack?
In terms of?
That it is not a city...
No, it's totally independent from the city. It's its own five oh one C three. And it originally was created to stage a city festival. I don't know exactly when the donation for fireworks started, but when I started here, it was twenty-five hundred dollars. And there were other organizations. We matched what they would come up with. Of course, with everything else, there's always problems with fundraising, so the city did agree to take over the cost of the fireworks for Booster Day. As Bob and Brian both alluded to, our city public works department does all the setup and the cleanup for this, too. So, it's quite busy on this week getting everything ready, getting everything mowed, starting getting everything prepped, setting bleachers out, tents, fences, and then there's the cleanup involved, too. So, we have donations in kind and monetarily also.
So, to circle back to the fact that it's an unpaid position from the city because it's a separate entity, that may not, it wouldn't be responsible to give payments out like we do for planning, zoning, and those other committees. But as Booster Day itself does do a whole lot for the residents, does a lot for the city on the efforts of one person, I think some appreciation at least should be given to that director from the city.
That, that's fine to give kudos to the director, but as Denise knows, there's a lot more than a person that's behind the scenes here. And if you're going to include one, you're going to have to include everybody, because one person couldn't do it.
Absolutely. Could be that as well, and it could be a topic for a work meeting. But I just wanted to at least bring this fact up and...
Mayor and council members, appreciation, I get it, fully supportive. But when we get into kind of a monetary type of remittance to an outside group or individual associated with that, that's not something that I would advise you could approve today. That would be something that we'd have to look into and just look at legality of it and also make sure that it meets with other proprietary aspects. So, I just want to be cautious. I would not be recommending approval of such a motion here today on that grounds.
I wasn't intending to have a motion approved or anything. I just thought it would be some, something to bring up to discuss.
Isn't that something legislative auditor would look into for expenditures? If it doesn't, if costs don't benefit the city as a whole, I know they'll, they investigate because we have that problem.
Mayor, council member, that's why I was putting a pause, and that is appreciation in some form, especially for volunteers. I get it, you know, because we all know that that is an extraordinary effort and additional personal time that people are doing on behalf of the community. So, great, but when we get into now, as you've indicated, some type of monetary from public monies and so forth... But when we get into now, as you've indicated, some type of monetary from public monies and so forth, that's where I'm saying, okay, let's put a pause on it. Um, so that's, that's all I'm getting at, so.
Yeah, that's fine. I just thought it'd be worthy to bring the subject up.
Oh, it is.
And if we come up with something at any given time, then that's great. Um, but in the meantime, I just wanted to really thank Stephanie for her efforts.
Yeah, I just wondered if maybe in the way it's set up is, is kind of making it harder than it needs to be. Tim's gonna be on, on the Booster Day commi- is on the Booster Day committee, so maybe you want to look at maybe improving how it's set up so it's not such a crunch on one, one or very few people.
We'll definitely do that.
Yeah.
So, but other than promoting Booster Day this weekend, lots of fun activities.
I was gonna do it after we adjourn, but that's a better idea to do it during the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, this would be the time for it.
That's why many cooks make a better dinner. Or whatever you want, whatever you want, whatever you want to say. That doesn't make any sense, but that's all right. Uh, are we done?
Yeah.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I did.
Did you? Shut up and listen.
Tim Miller seconded it.
Seconded already? Oh, wow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None heard. There we go.